There we got one guy.
Getting you up in the council meeting, December fifth, twenty twenty-three. Anyone in the audience needs to make, can't find headphones, please raise your hand, all staff there, so guess not. Let's write for the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the law. And to the report for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
All right, Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Bod.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Council have any late changes to the agenda? City managers?
Nothing to mention.
All right. Council have any board reports to share? All right. Has everyone reviewed the items in the consent agenda? Have a motion.
Move to approve the consent as published.
All right, we have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as published, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. All right, first business item is Finance Director Mike Giddens. Information for us about the twenty twenty-three budget supplemental.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council, I'm back before you with the budget. So this, for members of the public and council, this is really what I would call a cleanup supplemental budget process. I know it appears a little bit daunting when you look at all of the items listed, and so I want to clarify, as I put in the briefing, we budget for an expenditure authority. We don't always know when we're going to receive certain grants, how much certain projects are going to be, and so what we're doing here is cleaning up the budget authority, so that as we're ending the fiscal year, the budget is in line with what council has approved for us to spend in certain funds. We also have encountered some situations where things changed. As you know, council set capital budgeting up a few years ago, and so when we make that original adoption of the fiscal year budget, we set up that we're going to move certain amounts into the capital budgets for those projects, and sometimes being good stewards, Public Works in particular, are planning for projects over a couple of years to get the monies, the funds together. Things change, and so in a couple of instances, we are deobligating some of those funds. That gives us your official authority to take that money back into the operating budgets, where then they can be used in other ways. And it's not always that the projects aren't happening, sometimes they're happening through different funding mechanisms that we've encountered. So it could be that we got grants in some cases to fund in different ways. One of the bigger examples on this is the solid waste fund, and I know you're aware of that, but I do want to say for the record, we're increasing the budget authority on that now that we know the final number. So we could have brought you a piece of it in June when we did a supplemental, but we knew it was ongoing. I want to point out that we received a good amount of revenue re- reimbursement from Department of Ecology partnered with us on that cleanup. And when I say the solid waste fund, that's the Sea Street landfill cleanup. And so that's a large item, a nine hundred, just over nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. The rest of the items are, some of them are very small. The hundred and nineteen dollars that we're asking for additional budget authority for that cargo van, I broke it down so that that amount appeared. We wanted to be transparent. The amounts for the parks trucks, we waited until we actually got the invoices, paid for them, so we knew exactly how much. We had an idea that those prices were going to increase, but until we actually received the vehicles and the invoice, we wanted to clean that up now. I mentioned some of the, the obligation of funds that we're asking you to process through this. But that's the supplemental we're bringing you again, it's cleaning up to make sure our, our budget authority is in line as we round out the fiscal year. So we're really not asking for any reductions of any kind in staffing or anything like that, like we did with the first supplemental. This is purely to clean up primarily our capital fund budgeting.
Thank you, Mike. Jonathan, wants to have a public comment?
No, they haven't, Mr. Mayor.
Right. You know, in the audience like to speak on this, any staff members? Okay. Can we read an ordinance number two zero one five dash one zero two three?
Ordinance number two zero one five dash one zero two three. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending the annual budget for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Donna, comments or questions? Or motion, excuse me.
Sir Mayor, I move to forward ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one zero two three to the December nineteenth, council action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? We have a motion to second to forward ordinance number two zero one five dash one zero two three to the December nineteenth city council meeting for the consideration, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. We have, we have an ordinance related to low impact development principles and facilities, Public Works Stormwater Technician Kenny Oberg has details for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. So the first thing that comes to mind is what exactly is low impact and low impact development? I'm sure the term has been thrown around and heard by a few of you, but even the definition itself that's provided to us by ecology is somewhat confusing with what it has inside of it. This all pertains to more like a holistic approach to new and possibly redevelopment, depending on the case. And it's just a way to mimic predisturbance of the site in the best way possible, when it's feasible. So, next slide please. Just a little overview of the presentation. I'll have a couple of slides where we can kind of go into the different portions of low impact development, just while we go through those, keep in mind that it's all in one encompassing, I guess, practice would be the best way to put this. Or an approach to development. We'll touch on the permit requirements, that is our phase two stormwater permit requirements administered to us from ecology. And then the actual project itself that we had to go through to meet said permit requirements. And that was a complete review of our Shelton municipal code as it is, as it exists. And the whole point of that was to eliminate barriers to implementing and requiring certain lit principles and BMPs. And BMPs are best management practices when it's related to stormwater and site development. And then at the end, we'll have a little bit of time for questions if they do arise, next slide. So this is a nice definition of low impact development, and actually, when I found this, it had a little note on it that said it took ecology and stakeholders two years to come up with this. So I am going to read it, and it's, we'll see how it goes for that. Low impact development, lit is a stormwater and land use management strategy that strives to mimic predisturbance hydrologic processes of infiltration, filtration, storage, evaporation, and transpiration by emphasizing conservation use of onsite natural features, site planning, and disturbed stormwater management practice, distributed stormwater management practices that are integrated into a project design. So that right there, it covers the initial design, the site exploration, this taking in all facets, facets of site development into one thing, and you start at the beginning instead of, you know, when I came last, came to you guys last year with the source control inspection stuff. That whole program, that was for existing development, and that's kind of a retroactive fixed, I guess you could say, to stormwater issues that were set in stone when that site was developed and as we developed as a city. This is catching all that beforehand, and it's a proactive approach to make sure that as development continues in the future, it's designed from the beginning to help stormwater and keep our surrounding waters clean and free, mostly free of threats, next slide please. So this portion of low impact development, a lot of it comes down to the BMPs, best management practices, or this slide in particular focuses more on the actual facilities. What you're looking at there is a bio retention facility for a parking lot and also portions of the road. To touch on that picture, because it does look so nice. That actually plays a huge part, it's similar to what we have on Eighth Street in our rain garden, similar concepts applied to it, it doesn't work quite the same. But essentially, it captures that stormwater, slows it down, holds it within the cell, and that infiltrates most of it unless you have maybe a storm like this. And it holds on to those pollutants and allows water infiltrate, gives it time to do that. And it's also aesthetically pleasing, which is a good thing for most developers. Main purpose of lit facilities in, in a whole site design is to kind of go away from the traditional management of stormwater, which is you get the stormwater off the road, off the impervious surfaces as fast as you can, you get it to one big pond, or i- if you are able to discharge into a water body, and you get it off as soon as you can, as fast as you can. What that does is create high peak flows during storm events. And it also, depending on the site, can lead to one point of failure. So if your pond gives out, your piping structures get clogged, anything like that, or commonly catch bases. Low impact development takes those same principles, adds in a little more treatment, and also disperses that, so it keeps the flows having to travel so far. It eliminates peak flow during a storm event, because you take that one large, let's say, detention pond, and you spread that out with different lid facilities and BMPs throughout your site and in your initial site design to eliminate that one large point of failure. And by doing that, it usually can last longer and can, in some cases, it's actually reduce the cost of construction of the site, because you're utilizing the existing topography as much as you can, you're retaining native vegetation with this system. And it usually can increase open space. Some of our recommended code changes or additions do allow for utilization of lit BMPs and facilities in also meeting the requirement for open space for development, which is kind of a two birds with one stone thing, it works well. Next slide, please. So again, the key principles you, I want you to take away from this is it's an overall strategy to site development, doesn't just focus on construction or site planning, it takes in everything. So when you develop a site, you know, this, this is day to day for me, so it doesn't seem like anything new, but you look at the topography, the soils of the site, that's a very important one, because a lot of low impact development facilities utilize infiltration, which is not always feasible because of soil conditions of the site. So that's something that when you initially have site planning, you want to make sure that that's a possibility within your site or portions of your site. Then you also have hydrology, you know, seasonal high groundwater tables onsite run on from different sites if it's downstream. I'm trying not to get too down in the weeds here, and then you also have to take in account what's surrounding the site. The zoning requirements, access, how you will be able to access, what possibilities are for access. And then, of course, you know, what the rest of what goes into a site design, but all of that is encompassed in that site analysis portion of the low impact development approach. Next slide, please. So I've already kind of touched on this, but these are the key points, just comparing, you know, traditional stormwater management to what lit practices enable. It's, again, separating out that large, one stormwater facility or you have multiples, they're still usually quite large, they take up a large amount of space. And most of the time, they're quite costly to construct. Lit practices, it can get even as small as what we commonly require here, if it's feasible, is downspout infiltration. So your roof water goes in your catch basin in your yard, and it's like a mini drain field for your roof water. But if you multiply that over a two hundred lot development, that cuts off a huge amount of flow that traditionally would get piped into the stormwater system within the road, and then you have to have that detention pond or treatment facility. So it, it really emphasizes spreading out the management of stormwater, even down to a lot basis. Next slide, please. So this would be an example of a conventional stormwater detention ponds, and this is still common, you know, if, if infiltration onsite is not possible, there's only so many things to do with all the water that's going to come off. And, you know, these still meet the basic treatment requirements of settling out contaminants, and then, of course, some of this, these lit practices and principles are already integrated into our code. When we adopted the twenty nineteen stormwater management manual for Western Washington, that went along with it, were those minimum requirements, and a lot of those minimum requirements meet the lid feast, the lid approach to constructing a site. So it's already part of our code, but what we did in this project was, again, try to eliminate barriers that would inhibit us from implementing this, and in some cases, making a requirement. And I know when some people hear requirement, it makes them kind of run away a little bit, because usually that means it's expensive and you have to do it no matter what. And that is not the case with this. If it's feasible, meaning economically, in most cases, sometimes people will push back on the economic part, but if it's feasible, meaning your site has a topography, the soil drainage capabilities and everything else, then that's when it's required. We're not going to try to ask somebody to do the impossible, an engineer way to infiltrate on soil that just holds water like a lake. Next slide, please. These are just a few examples. One of them, as you know, is local, and that's the MTA parking lot, I also want to reference the city parking lot, that was in a different slide. But that right there, it cuts down on the amount of stormwater that is built up and has to be dealt with. It infiltrates the stormwater onsite, you don't have to treat the stormwater because it's getting filtered through the ground. And it can even go as far as something very simplistic, like the top right picture, that is a vegetated filter strip. Most people, this looks like a grassy knoll off of a road, but that right there actually cuts down on the amount of pollutants that are in stormwater, especially from road runoff. And it actually cuts down quite a bit on the pollutants that would enter a wetland or a stream, or just a conventional storm system, have to be treated in other ways. It can get to the point where it's even smaller, even individual lots, if they're infiltrating their roof downspout water in an infiltration gallery, they can have a rain garden onsite to catch the sheet flow that would go onto their site and hold that and keep it from entering the roadway and getting pollutants absorbed into that way as well.
What's the upper left?
Upper left is a very ornate version of a roadside swale slash bio retention swale. Those do not have to look like that, most of the time, they're just a grass line channel, maybe with some sedges and rushes in it. Particularly something that is drought tolerant, especially for us. But that is a awesome example of it, so I wanted to put that in there, because it looks very nice as well. Another note, I wanted to add, these changes in the code, you know, this isn't a one and done deal, as as technology improves what's considered feasible and possible, will of course change with improvement in technology and what we know we can and can't do. So along with that, you know, this, I'm sure I'll see you guys again at some point in the future for updating some other portion of the code. And again, we're adapting and changing our standards as, as time goes on with these improvements in technology. It wasn't part of this project, it was already done, but our reduction in road width for local residential roads in particular, that is thirty-two feet now face to face, or face a curb to face a curb. But just that reduction in width of that road, multiplied over miles and miles of these new roads that will be constructed at some point, adds up to a lot of reduction in pervertious surfaces, which then cuts down the amount of stormwater that we have to deal with. It's just taken care of by not having such a wide road. As far as our permit requirements go, this is an ongoing requirement, especially the top bullet point there. And that is, at a minimum, to annually assess how the implementation of lit BMPs and principles is actually working for developers or city staff, for all parties involved. You know, as you continue on, you have a certain occurrence where you're going to catch something like, ooh, that isn't going to really work because of this code section and the way it relates to this other section or in our standards menu. So it's a continual process, it's like a, a living process of how we're going to keep on top of this, and it'll, of course, change with time. The middle bullet point was the permit requirement specifically for this project. And that was a complete review of our code and incorporation of certain abilities, or at least allowed by the code to implement low impact development within site development or redevelopment. And of course, the last two words are, where feasible. Again, we're not going to make people do something that's impossible, it's going to be, if you can, it should be done this way, which is the way. The overall intent of this, short of the permit requirements, is to make the low impact development the preferred and commonly used approach. So we don't want to have to constantly remind developers at some point, when we have this in our standards, in our code, it'll just be the way that we know we have to do it from the developer standpoint. Which is good, because other than, you know, what's required by ecology, the way this works and the end result of low impact development actually benefits everybody, not even, not just within the development, but everyone that lives around it and works around it. And it is good for the overall health of our community as well, just cuts down on pollutants that enter our streams and makes water bodies. So this isn't everything that was changed in the code, again, if you went through it, it's not a whole lot of changes, it's more of additions or changing a few little aspects of wording within existing code sections. But it's the general overview is just making it the preferred approach and making low impact development, say, best management practices and principles in that approach in, integrated into the way it's, excuse me, integrated into our codes and our standards, so it doesn't become a roadblock. We have a certain standard that didn't allow for planter strips on a roadside. That's the kind of thing, those big hitter items, that they're important, they need to be in there, but that's actually a low impact of best management practice. Next slide, please. That's all I have for you.
All right. Donna, has anyone sent a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone on Zoom would like to speak?
No, sir.
All right, may have a reading of ordinance number two zero one seven dash one one two three.
Ordinance number two zero one seven dash one one two three. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending the Shelton municipal code related to low impact development principles and facilities.
Thank you, Donna, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move forward, ordinance number two zero one seven dash one one two three to the December nineteenth city council meeting for further consideration.
All right, comments or questions?
Question.
Deputy Mayor.
Inspection and insurance that, once this is constructed, that it's being maintained, how do we go about that?
Do you ask that question primarily because I can answer it?
Sweet.
Under new development, a part of the final certificate of occupancy or final city acceptance is a stormwater facility maintenance agreement, and that's the private stormwater facility maintenance agreement. So if it is part of a private system, then that has to be recorded with the land. Doesn't matter if it's sold or bought by anybody else, it stays with the land and with the facilities. And that has to be reviewed and approved by us, has to be put together by the engineer or an engineer hired by the developer. And it has mechanisms in place to ensure that it is properly operated and maintained. It has specific O and M manuals that go along with the facility and what it is, and there's also mechanisms within that agreement. So if it does become an issue and they're not maintaining it properly, or, you know, if there's an HOA that had to maintain this facility in the development, HOA was dissolved, no one's maintaining it, we can actually go in, do the maintenance or the repairs that are needed, and then it actually gets billed out to them. So it's a strong incentive to keep up on your operations and maintenance of this, and that goes along with every private stormwater facility that's installed with new development.
My follow up to that then is what's, how do we communicate, how are we kind of doing the public outreach? I know, I think we had a grant a few years back when we were starting that phase two implementation, is, is there still money, do we need to think about?
What a great segue, next presentation. Yeah, it, public education outreach is a very large and time consuming permit requirement that we're that we have to do under this phase two stormwater permit. And that is on a, we do receive an biannual grant from ecology, it's a competitive, no city match grant fund. And that is primarily how we fund the Mason Conservation District, and they're taking care of our permit requirements for public education outreach.
I just wanted to express my happiness that we're including best management practices in the low income, low development area, and we are located on top of active salmon and trout streams, so it's super important that we keep the water clean, not just with them, but for also the, the oysters and shellfish in the bay and all the ones we consume during moisture rest. So, just, I just want to congratulate us as a city to keep best management practices up to date and always into low income development, so thank you.
Right, any other questions? All right, we have a motion to second to court ordinance number two zero one seven dash one one two three to the December nineteenth city council meeting for further consideration, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. All right, public hearing is closed, back to regular meeting. We have another item from Kenny.
As I said, Councilmember Smith, what a great segue, it's my next presentation. This is just a presentation to have our capacity grant from ecology, the stormwater capacity grant accepted by the city. It has an effective date of July first of twenty twenty-three, even though we didn't get the funding agreement until November sixteenth of this year. Any expenses that were accrued that are eligible for that grant can be reimbursed one hundred percent with it. This grant, I think the last cycle, we got seventy thousand for the biennium. And there is an amendment and increase there, this year they started us at a hundred and thirty thousand, and it's a non-city match grant.
Right, Donna, anyone sent a public comment, were you done, I'm sorry?
No, that's good.
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anyone in the audience would like to speak, or on Zoom? All right, do we have a motion?
Mayor, move forward, resolution number one three zero two dash one one two three to the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, city council meeting for further consideration.
All right, comments or questions? Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, we have a motion to second to forward resolution number one three zero two dash one one two three to December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting for the consideration, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Capital Project Manager Aaron Nix has information for us about well one project.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council, thank you guys for having me again. I bring forward to you what we're calling amendment number four, this is relevant to the well number one project with regard to the one that we just recently awarded. We got the signed contract back today, so we're getting ready to ramp this up and get the pre-con going to construct that. I obviously need to come before you with regard to an ask for additional funds. I will say immediately, we have the budget covered for not only the construction of this, but also the other project management work, those types of things. All of that has been identified and we have it ready available. I kind of included a breakdown for you guys on, on the briefing, if you want to take a look at, at that real quickly, with regard to the costs associated with this project. I kinda included a breakdown for you guys on, on the briefing. If you wanna take a look at, at that real quickly with regard to the costs associated with this project. Um, I just kinda wanted to go over those a little bit with you. Um, and provide some additional comment. Um, you'll see uh at least design and permitting um identified, uh, and that was done earlier. Previous contract, we were almost done with those monies. That was for obviously design and permitting of two hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Um, the ask that I coming forward to you tonight um under this amendment number four is for construction management services during construction, and that's that two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, eight hundred and sixty dollars. For that project, for a cumulative, um, and I, I want, you guys are probably saying, Aaron, uh, how much money are we paying consultants for these types of projects? I, I agree with you. Um, but candidly, this, that's pretty average, believe it or not. Um, if you look at the numbers, twenty percent is pretty much the average, at least identified for uh design and construction management. There's the table right there for you guys. But, uh, and I would offer to the council, Jay and I have been, and Brent and everybody have been discussing this. I actually have some construction management experience and background. Um, I'm not saying we're immediately gonna move over to this, but we'd, we'd like to do, and there may be some future asks or maybe stuck in inspector or something with the notion that we could cut some of that money that we're paying towards these consultants and taking it in-house and actually managing the construction of those. So I'm not saying we're going to do that, but I think that's an option for us. Um, it will definitely save us money. I mean, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, that's a generator or two for us. So and, and I understand, I really do. And these are things that every jurisdiction fights with you guys. So um, I just wanted to make you aware of that. Um. Let me see. So uh, Grayne Osborne, um, they obviously have the proposal. Also, um, I don't know if folks know, we had a gentleman that worked here and I don't know, Rover Clint? He worked for us for a long time. He actually works for Grayne Osborne. He's actually, and the reason why we're suggesting that we move forward with this from a staff pers- perspective is this is a fairly technical project. Um, the water system, um, as well as the piping and those kinds of things are, are fairly complicated. So I will offer and give the council that I will be not necessarily, Jay has me kinda running around. I'm trying to put a, a bunch of different projects, but I'm gonna be involved in this to kinda oversee Grayne Osborne to ensure that indeed, uh, whatever they at least they've estimated is real. Um, and that's just a kind of a QA QC on our part. Try to deal with that to hopefully bring some of those costs down. So really, that's all I have for this presentation for you guys. Um, I'm just looking to add this to the action agenda. Again, we will be going to, we'll be setting the um pre-con here shortly, and the hope is by mid-January, we will be constructing. So any questions, concerns?
Donna, anyone sent a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anybody on Zoom?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, please place amendment number four to the design construction management contract of Gary and Osborne Incorporated for well number one pipeline pressurization project, the action agenda for the December nineteenth council meeting.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Just a comment that if we don't have the internal workforce to do it, we have to farm it out, um, especially for utilizing grant funds. We have expectations to perform.
Yeah.
Um, taking additional risk. Not interested. So I'm a supporter of bringing on the consultants for this. Understand the cost being what it is, but you know, until we have the revenues to support adding depth in that city hall, this is just a necessary thing we're gonna have to do. Appreciate the effort. Thank you.
And council, I, I will say tell you that I, and I think I mentioned this too at my last presentation, we are gonna try to in-house manage the, the, the Safe Routes to Schools project. That's really straightforward. Um, we, Amy, our senior inspector, will be managing that. Obviously, we've been working together on that, but that's just to save some money as well, because that project is really tight. So.
Any other comments? We have a motion, a second to place amendment number four to the design construction management contract for Grayne Osborne Incorporated for the well one pipeline pressur- pressurization project to the action agenda for December nineteenth council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. I thought we talked about these long motions.
Got a bingo card.
Next on the agenda is the contract for city prosecution services. City manager Mark Ziegler has information.
Mr. Mayor, council members, um, as the council's aware, uh, our current um contract prosecutor provided a notice of termination back in August of this year. Um, staff released a request for proposals for prosecutorial services uh through our normal means as well as um through local um bar associations throughout the southwest Washington, western Washington. Uh, we were only in receipt of one uh proposal. That was from Gunderson Law Firm. Uh, city staff interviewed um Gunderson Law Firm after the RFP, and we were pleasantly surprised with the, who told that interview and happy with the services they can offer to the city of Shelton. Um, they're providing the services to a couple other communities such as Lakewood, Ruston, and Black Diamond. Uh, so tonight uh is a draft uh contract with Gunderson Law Firm for contract prosecutorial services. The contract is for ten thousand dollars per month, um, for the docket on a monthly basis, uh, and then five hundred dollars for each day for uh any staff training, uh, training with um with our police department um to, you know, develop uh I guess case development and things like that. Um, the current contract um is an hourly rate with um Young Glove and Coker and at about, I think it's at two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, and our average bill uh each month is about twelve thousand dollars. So um, we'd actually um see a savings, you know, based on um s- similar um court cases, at least. Count. So um, actually, I hope um results in a savings to the city and at least in the near future.
Donna, anyone sent a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
You want to, and the audience like to speak on this? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to place resolution number one three zero three dash one one two three on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three council action agenda for the consideration.
All right.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, that's the, that's the next. So this is the prosecutorial, um, contract for prosecute prosecutorial services.
Yeah, move to place the contract for prosecuting services for Guinness Law Firm on the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three action.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I didn't catch who the second was on that one. Thank you.
All right. Comments or questions?
Questions. Yes. So going to flat rate versus an hourly rate, I mean, I mean, I don't wanna really, I don't know, but uh concerns that uh willingness to prosecute.
Yeah, and that was, that was certainly a, a large part of our uh, our interview um with the firm. Uh, and uh, I think that as this is a firm that specializes in prosecutorial services, um, they demonstrated that that is what they do every day essentially, and they're not practicing um other forms of, of um, of law. So um, the, the court administrator, um police captain, um, city clerk, HR manager, and myself were, were comfortable with the responses we got from, from the, from the firm and um, certainly have the ability to terminate the contract at a later date if, if uh, if they're not meeting um, the objectives of the contract. Um, as you know, um, we had one response to the RFP. Um, we've had little um luck in the past, frankly. Um, so it may be, maybe who was in the future to have more conversations with Mason County um, local jurisdictions on how maybe we can combine some services and uh pool our resources to um come up with a more appropriate services and better services here. But uh, at this point, this is my recommendation in order to move forward with that prosecutorial services uh effective January one.
Perhaps it'd be a good idea to check in in six months or so to see how it's going.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to place the contract with prosecution services on the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three action agenda for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Another item from Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, bringing forward tonight a um grant uh acceptance uh grant agreement from the Office of Public Defense um for fiscal years twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five in the amount of seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, be thirty-nine thousand dollars and twenty-four, thirty-nine, twenty-five, uh distributed to the city. Um, the grant will offset indigent public defense costs in the city's municipal court. Um, this has been a grant program, at least it was in place last couple of years, I'm not sure before that as well. But actually, um, court administrator and the, and a judge worked on this grant application previously, and we asked, actually asked for more money than this and did not receive that unfortunately. Um, we're hoping to offset um some of the um staffing costs with administration of of municipal court, but uh we're not successful in the portion of the grant, but I wanna uh thank our municipal court staff anyway for their, their time and efforts in applying for this grant and successful, uh, successfully awarding that from Office of Public Defense.
All right, Donna, anyone sent a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Go motion.
Mr. Mayor, now I move to place resolution number one three zero three dash one one two three, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three council action agenda for further consideration.
Right. Comments or questions? All right, we have a motion, a second to place resolution number one three zero three dash one one two three on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three council action agenda for the consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. All right, oh, back to Mark.
Yeah, we're gonna go to uh state with the defense portion of uh this court here. So um you have in front of you tonight, the contract for indigent public defense, the municipal court. Um, this contract's from Sound Defenders. Uh, Attachron Associates has been um the contract, uh, public defender in municipal court since two thousand and eight. Um, this is a renegotiated and updated contract after a couple amendments um have been completed over the years. This is kind of a cleanup of the contract and a renegotiation of the actual cost to provide the services. Um, those haven't really kept up with the, with inflation over time. So no other, no changes have been made to the contract since the uh briefing on uh November twenty-first.
All right, thank you, Mark. Donna, public comments?
No, we don't.
Right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the contract for indigent defense services as presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? Nope. Good job of getting it a little bit. You guessed a little bit better than that. We have a motion, a second to approve the contract for indigent defense services as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Mark, it's a Mark show tonight.
That's right. Uh, in front of you is the city's twenty twenty-four legislative agenda. Again, no changes have been made since the briefing on November twenty-first. Um, I will um comment though, uh, this Friday, the legislative standoff with our representing representatives um will be held out at Alderbrook, and so we'll be attending that um to make sure that uh our delegation here's our, here's our priorities and uh and is, you know, I guess current uh with, with the city's needs.
All right, thank you, Mark. Donna, anyone sent a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Maybe I read a resolution number one three zero zero dash one one two three.
Resolution number one three zero zero dash one one two three. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, establishing the twenty twenty-four legislative agenda.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve resolution number one three zero zero dash one one two three, establishing the city's twenty twenty-four legislative agenda.
Comments or questions? All right, we have a motion, a second to approve resolution number one three zero zero dash one one two three, establishing the city's twenty twenty-four legislative agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Hey, somebody different. Hey, Jay. The last item is, is a letter of support for a grant, committee economic development director Jay Hill.
Mayor, council, thank you. Uh, so last year, the legislature passed uh House Bill eleven eighty-one, which required uh the addition of a new element to comprehensive plans uh related to climate mitigation and, and resiliency. So um, we're looking for hazard mitigation. Larger communities are gonna be doing uh vehicle miles trip uh reduction and greenhouse gas reduction and things like that. We get to skip those, but we're gonna focus more on kind of like uh natural disasters, things that we know happen here, flooding, uh fires, drought, things like that that we need to be planning for. So uh, the state uh non-competitively uh allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our community. We still had to apply for it. Uh, and uh, one of the application requirements was a letter of support. Uh, we already made the application. They let us submit the application without having the letter. We got it on the agenda as quickly as we could to uh get this uh sign, and then we'll submit this along to uh the state. So this is work that's going to augment our existing comprehensive plan allocations from the city budget and from the money that we got from Department of Commerce to work on this too. So uh, it, uh, our plan is to um increase the uh scope of the contract with our comp plan consultant, S C J, um, and have them uh kind of integrate this work into what we're doing. One of the requirements of the bill is that it kinda look, needs to look at it holistically. We're not just creating an element, but those, those policies need to kinda cross-reference throughout the plan as well. So uh, that is our plan. And with that, we're just asking uh for the council to approve uh the mayor signing the letter of support for the climate mitigation and resilience uh grant funding.
Thank you, Jay. Donna, anyone sent a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that you sign the letter of support for the climate resilience grant funding opportunity and to waive the three touch rule.
Second. Right, comments or questions? Right, we have sign that letter. All right, we have a motion, a second to have me sign the letter of support for the climate resilience grant funding opportunity and waive the three touch rule. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed. Motion carries. Back to Mark for city manager.
All right, thank you. Um, short, but the theme is volunteerism. I think uh as we're all um out in the main room of the Civic Senate this afternoon, we had thirty-some individuals that have given their time and efforts uh to the city over the past year. Uh, we wanna thank them, recognize them. Obviously, didn't capture the hundred and twenty or so individuals um that have given their time to this, to the city and the community through um, through volunteerism and adopting a park or a advisory committee. Um, and we've calculated that at, if you calculate it minimum wage at almost twelve thousand dollars in contributions to our community. So uh, we took the opportunity to thank those individuals and hopefully encourage um more volunteerism in our community. Um and sticking with that theme, as I said, um, this past weekend and the holiday magic and the tree lighting and the, the parade um really truly shows um how important volunteerism is in our, in our community, the amount of people that showed up. Um, particularly Saturdays, Friday probably wasn't as busy as it could have been, um, but it was wet. Um, take my word for it, it was wet. Um, but it was still a great event. We had a lot of folks um at the tree lighting and, and the kids caroling and then moving through the community. We had great, great reports from uh downtown businesses on uh, on the activities down there. Um, so there's too many people involved to really thank, right? But we wanna recognize um just the, just the events, the activities, and they're ongoing throughout uh, throughout this month and Christmas and the tree mazes next door. And if you saw the tree maze by any chance, um, you might not have seen me because the lines over there after the, after the parade was, was tremendous. How many people were, were milling around downtown and, and taking advantage of the activities down here. So it was really nice to see. Um. The other um volunteer project that's coming up this weekend is the installation of the playground in North Cliff Neighborhood Park. Um, that project will actually take place on seventh and eighth um with city staff and a contractor and then a volunteer effort on Saturday to finish up the playground uh as well. It probably won't be open right away, particularly with this weather. We'll have some restoration to do on-site to, to, you know, blade out some of the, some of the ruts and things like that and let concrete uh cure. But uh, it's, it's a, it's a great project, uh monumental. Uh, I think project for the uh North Cliff Neighborhood and uh having a neighborhood park uh start to be developed up there after um that property being uh dedicated for park uses back in the seventies. Um, so um, we're trying to meet the um parks and recreation comprehensive plans, action steps, and that is um to provide neighborhood parks throughout our community, and that standard is half mile service radius. So um, one more step. One more step in that positive direction, I want to thank the the donors, our our local Kiwanis Clubs, Christmas Town and Shelton Kiwanis that donated to that and. Sarah Pacific Industries, Wox Island Drive, a number of individuals, Mr. Mayor, thank you, um, as well, um, it's. That offset the cost of that project and made it, that made it a possibility of why we're doing that, uh, this weekend, so, um. Again, that's, that's a theme of my report today is the volunteerism in our community and how, uh, how, uh, how important it is, um, to making this a great place to live. So, that's all I have for you tuning.
Alright, thank you, Mark, anyone have any questions for Mark?
If there's anything that Leslie Noe taught me is that this is a really big deal, so, uh, congrats, yeah, it's, this is cool, it's. See you come fruition now and. Build a park.
Absolutely.
How many, how many parks have you been able to build in Shelton in your career?
I mean, from scratch, really, really none, right? Yeah, we've renovated, yeah, we've been involved in renovating Calan and Highland Park specifically and a couple trails and things like that, but yeah, this is, this is kind of the first one in thirty years. If you will, right, it's, uh, as I said, monumental.
That, congrats, awesome. Alright, that, it is exciting, that is my neighborhood, so I'm excited for that, um, hey, Mark, a couple weeks ago, we had us wearing in for Chief Costad and. And Sergeant Patton, or Captain Patton, excuse me, and we missed an opportunity because there's so many people here to talk about some accreditations, did you want to talk about that at all?
Um, you know, we've mentioned it a few times, I think, I think chief through the accreditation process, would you like an update on that? On that process, I'm sure you'd be happy to, yeah, to take a, take a few moments, uh, unplanned.
Um, yeah, I had the opportunity to, uh, go to the WASPIC conference, uh, the beginning of November, um, where, uh. Had to present our accreditation to the, to the board there, it's a, it's a very diverse, um. Um, program where it covers over a hundred and thirty-five different chapters, uh, with the police department and, um. It ranges from training to records keeping, uh, to, um, how we're onboarding people and and, um. Just various asset, uh, aspects of the police department and it's, um, it was a extremely a lot of work, uh, for the police department, um. Not to include myself, but, um, the records department was absolutely fantabulous, so on this, my, uh, my sergeants, um, all contributed to. The process as well, um, it was over a year's work to to get that complete and, um. I'm just very proud of them all and glad to say that, uh, in this accreditation, uh, process this year that we are successful and we are good to go for another four years. And, uh, we just look forward to serving the community as best as we can and maintaining the best practices possible.
Thank you.
And one thing the chief left out, we're eligible for grant funding because of accreditation process, so the chief is.
Brand new program that just came out this year through WASPIC, being that we are, um, uh, re-accredited, um, there is a million dollars out there for grabs. Um, so I already put in, uh, the grant request for that, I don't know how much that is going to be allocated towards us. Um, but it, um, there's no restrictions on that, we can use that money for whatever we want.
Oh, wow, great, great job, right?
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, okay, it's, uh, my, my short time in this position and and working with with, um. Then captain in chief and understanding the accreditation process and the work that's put into it, it's amazing, they, um, when they came and did a, a personal inspection of, of the. Of the police department, yeah, actually the evidence room, um, they checked a fan, an exhaust fan within that evidence room. And it wasn't functioning properly and pointed out, we had to have that fixed prior to his presentation at the WASPIC conference. Um, that's how detailed this is, um, that's the fine tooth comb that they they come out here and ensure that best practices are being. Um, practiced within, within the police department, so I think it's a credit to to this, to the chief and his staff o- over there that, uh. That they're able to to meet the the stringent requirements of the accreditation process.
Right. Thank you.
Excellent.
Alright, we call it, public comment time, Donna, anyone on Zoom that like to speak a public comment?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised, but let's give them just a minute.
No, there is, there is no public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, council, have any new items for discussion? Alright, our next meeting is Tuesday, December nineteenth at six P M, we also have study session December twelfth at six P M, this meeting is adjourned at six fifty-five P M.